Okay, congratulations, Marino's, welcome to town. Hope the kids get a great education for the school system. Mine certainly did. It certainly is an expensive one.
Thank you so much.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Good luck.
Thanks.
Um, okay, next up, Eileen and Wolfgang Fitz special permit under three point two point two. Uh, to it says to maintain an accessory apartment, but the plans look like maybe an accessory apartment is being built. Um, but I guess that's what I'm to say at fifty three Lake Street. Um, are the Fitz's here or anyone to speak for them?
Yeah, Rick Aston is here.
Okay. And are you, are you their architect?
Yeah, I'm the general contractor.
Okay.
So they're in Germany.
Okay, all right. So you're there, um, you're their representative. All right. Tell us about your petition. Uh, do you want me to pull up, pull up the plans?
Yeah. So basically the plan is to take the existing structure just to add a mudroom off to the side with a single car garage. Everything stays within the footprint of the lot. And it's really just an increase in square footage. That's that the use of the built, the intended use of the building is not going to change at all.
Does the building have the benefit of a three point two point two finding now?
Yeah.
I, yeah, it does, Jenny, yeah.
I see. Okay.
But under the old, um, bylaw, it's for, um, family members.
Got it.
So they're applying under the new bylaw?
Got it. Let me see if I can move zoom this in a little bit, make it a little more useful.
Right now. The way now. Yeah. Okay.
Moment here. Get the audio visual support you pay for here, folks. All right, um, Mr. Aston.
Yes, sir.
Um, this looks like the existing building. Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the existing building, which is now being used as an accessory apartment. And instead you're gonna add this jog on here. With the mudroom and the one car garage.
That was correct.
Okay, and, uh, you're requesting, and here it is a little better. Um, and you're requesting it be unrestricted as to use as is allowed under the current, uh, the revised zoning by law.
Well, there, there are a couple of numbers on that. Can we go back to that plan?
Good.
And, and, and there, there are more detailed plans too. Do you want to see him, Ron?
Yeah.
Do you want to see something, uh? What do you want? The, uh, the overheads, the?
I want to clarify the numbers that are on that first plan.
Okay, hold on. I'll see if I can zoom in. So back to here, but zoomed in?
Yeah, it says, uh, first floor existing. Uh, can you scroll? Okay, it says seven hundred and eighty four feet. Then the proposed area is fourteen sixty eight. I thought our limit was twelve hundred.
That's what I was gonna look at. Um, under the current bylaws, isn't that?
It is twelve.
It is twelve hundred, but isn't that for living space only? This is the, the garage is part of that.
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify. So you're saying the fourteen sixty eight includes the garage?
That is correct.
So what's the number when it's just the living space with the, um, with the mudroom? Because presumably the mudroom is going to be conditioned and heated.
Do that math.
Or we can make it a condition.
No, give me one second.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. I was gonna ask that same question, but you asked it better. While he's looking, uh, at that, is there anyone else here to comment on this petition?
You know, if you, if you had the area of the garage, you could just subtract it from.
That's what I'm working on. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just twenty by twenty two six.
It's gonna do it.
That's four fifty. Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be about a thousand. Okay, you give us a number that will plug in and say it shouldn't be any bigger than X?
Yeah, the garage is four fifty, so if we just subtract that.
All right, so ten eighteen. Did I do that right?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. That's correct.
Um, okay, and, uh, you've already got all the permits for it, so the early, your only new space is gonna be the, the mudroom space. So it's not like you got new septic or anything like that.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, board members, other questions? Do you want to see other plans? Uh, there, there are lots of drawings of it, things like that.
No, I mean, this again seems like a very minor alteration to the existing structure.
And it complies with zoning, right? It's well within the setbacks, it looks like.
Yep.
Ron, what do you think?
Uh, I have no issues with it. I mean, if the, you know, the existing and the mudroom addition uh, is less than twelve hundred square feet, then it complies as far as I'm concerned.
All right, and, um, I mean, they fought. Sorry, go ahead, sir. Ron, were you saying something, sir?
Well, I, I, I assume that the, uh, I don't know if that's a side yard or a rear yard, uh, conditioned for the back of the garage. But I don't know what's mentioned.
Yeah, that, that's a real lot line that was looked at.
It, does it comply with the, this is a, this is a RC, is it?
Yeah, it complies. I've already talked with the building inspector about that. He had the same concern.
Yeah, because it's a triangular lot, Ron, so question is, well, is that a rear yard, rear?
Yeah.
If it was a rear, it could be a thirty, and if it was a side, it could be, had to be forty, right?
That is correct. But this is something the building inspector looked at with the town planner, and they went back in the records and came to the understanding that it is a rear lot line.
And even if it were a forty where your building would comply anyway.
Uh, it's close.
Okay.
It is close, but I do know that that was declared as a real lot line.
Hmm, okay.
Okay.
All right. Um,
uh, we'll just put in the zoning enforcement officer to confirm lot lines. It sounds like you've had that conversation with him.
Um, okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us about?
Uh, no, the use is basically gonna stay the same. This is for overflow family, uh, family members, you know, people staying over the house for, you know, parties and stuff like that. It's, uh, it's really not intended to be an apartment. But that's what they're applying for.
Yeah.
Well, the department will give them some. Actually as a guest apartment, is that?
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
All right, um, anybody else want to make a motion this time?
Not sure.
Share.
How to do it?
Well, I'd move that we grant the petition of I, petition twenty two oh, two dash twelve of Eileen and Wolfgang Fitz for a special permit under three point two point two. Um, to maintain an accessory apartment with alterations, uh, in the residency district on the conditions that all of the requirements of section three point two point two be observed. That the uh, space exclusive of garage not exceed one thousand one hundred eighteen feet. Uh, that the zoning enforcement officer i- is to comply, compliance with the, uh, applicable rear or side lot line. Um, and all other provisions of the zoning bylaw and Board of Health, uh, to be observed. That would be my motion.
Second, uh,
um, further discussion? Commentary? Mr. Aston, those conditions sound okay to you? They're just right off the standard ones?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, do we need to, do we, it, the square footage on the one thousand eighteen, shouldn't that just be twelve hundred because that's the ruling or?
Well, the, well, if, if they were going to expand it back up to twelve hundred, I, I guess we'd like to know what the plans were for that.
Yeah, we're not trying to make it bigger. I just, you know, if we're plus or minus a couple of feet, I just want to make sure we're good.
How about a thousand twenty?
That's what I was thinking.
Thousand, thou, let's make it a thousand twenty five. That, that gives people a little wiggle room for prayer. Sound good?
There you go.
Okay, all right. So I amend the motion to make it one thousand zero two five feet, not one thousand zero one eight feet. And that's my motion. Still seconded, Mr. Fitch?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm ready to vote unless you guys want to discuss it further. Uh, on, gee. All in favor, say aye. We'll do it by roll call, no backvotes. Aye.
Stefan guy.
Bitch, aye.
Okay, Mr. Aston, you can call Germany and tell them they got it.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Have a great evening. Thank you all. All right, but we still have a little wood to chop. Number three is a petition. For an appeal at fifty three Ford Road, uh, raised by Moore's, uh, represented by Mr. Dennis Murphy, I think, again. Um, uh, Morris, will you be speaking for yourself or will you have your counsel speak for you?
Uh, we have Dennis Murphy. He'll speak for us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Later.
Uh, welcome, Mr. Murphy. Welcome back. Welcome back, Mr. James Murphy. Um, uh, I'd, I'd like to just note that this is a forty A appeal of an issuance of a building permit. Um, if this were under forty B, which this land might be back before us someday under forty B or land next to it. Um, then all sorts of things under forty B might be relevant. Conscom, because we sit in the conscom shoes. Title restrictions, because those are relevant to, uh, to control the site and a bunch of other things under forty B, but tonight we're under forty A. So I'd like to direct both council to keep their comments to forty A appeals. And, uh, with that, Mr. Dennis Murphy, you're the petitioner. You're first up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's good to see members of the board and everyone again. Um, I did submit a letter, and I would have told you all uh, sooner, except the land court issues its reporter on the days it issues it, and it issued this one on Friday. I read it over the weekend, uh, like a good zoning lawyer, and, uh, I actually called the lawyer who won that case I cited to be sure I understood the import of the ruling. Uh, guy I know, and, uh, I think it plainly applies to this situation. And I don't mean to, uh, you know, sort of gum up procedurally, but it, it is a procedural issue about who decides and when. And I've had several other matters involving repetitive petition situations, which, uh, is a creature of statute, generally involves a planning board determining in the first instance by a near majority, all but one, that the petition application or whatever has materially changed. Uh, I see that some have an opinion, e- even the building inspector's view is that it has materially changed. Th- those were not his words, but, uh, and I, I don't fault him. Uh, he's not reading the land court reporter on the weekend, I hope. So, um, I think this is a new area of the law. And in my view, it plainly applies in that, uh, I hate to make work for the board or the applicant. We may end up having to do this again substantively, uh, i- if, if in fact there are substantive issues that we get to. But I think procedurally, the law requires that before a second building permit application can be considered, that it be first voted by all but one of the planning board. And the, since this is a three member zoning board, a, a unanimous three member zoning board. And let me stop right there because I think that, in my view, ends the matter, and I, I understand, um, Attorney Murphy's concern that, look, this wasn't raised sooner. Uh, I'm sure he reads the land court reporter as I do, and this case was decided on, I think a month ago, June sixteenth, it was just published on Friday. So I'm not sure that we could have given any more advance notice than we did. And, uh, the, the other point that I'll make is a minor one. Uh, I don't believe this is a waivable type argument, so even if I were at fault for not raising it in my original appeal, what Judge Foster determined is that the building commissioner's permit in that case was a legal nullity. It, yes, it was a piece of paper, but it was valueless because it couldn't lawfully, he was not authorized. I think it was a he, most building inspectors are. He was not authorized to issue a second permit because the planning board and the zoning board hadn't done what they are required to do under section sixteen. So, uh, that's the position of the Morse.
But, but Mr. Murphy, you know, the, the problem with magicians is they put the rabbit in the hat before they pull it out. And both you and with respect Judge Foster, who's a smart guy and hardworking, or remember as an associate of Rackman thousand years ago. Um, uh, put the rabbit in the hat here, which is assuming the key question, which is, is this a repetitive petition? Now, would you, i- is it your petition that anytime a zoning enforcement officer's issuance of a building permit is, is reversed a- as, as we did last time, that that lot becomes unbuildable for two years without going through the repetitive petition process?
No, uh, I think that proves too much, and I.
I think it does prove too much.
I don't think I could claim that anytime it were to happen. Uh, this is a, a fairly unique situation where you had, uh, same applicant, same parcel. And, um, look, it, it may well be that the planning board, uh, or at least the super majority of them agrees with the building inspector, and so does the zoning board. My point is that who gets to decide and, and when? And, uh, so I, I don't, I don't mean to say that anytime a building permit is denied, you can't apply for another one for two years. Uh, but in this instance where you've got um, a same applicant, same lot. Um, and, uh, the, um, circumstances here, I think it does apply.
Okay, and, uh, I'll let Mr. James Murphy make, make his arguments, but I'm, I, I'm gonna have some follow up questions for you, Mr. Dennis Murphy. Um, okay, uh, Mr. James Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think as you said or suggested in your questions to Mr. Dennis Murphy, that this is not a repetitive petition. Therefore, forty A, section sixteen doesn't apply. I think the case law, uh, especially even if you read, uh, this late, recent case. It says that the purpose of forty A, section sixteen is to spare affected property owners from having to go repeatedly to the barricades on the same issue. And so that would suggest that unless this is something that's raising the same issue, it's not a repetitive petition. So for example, in the, the recent land court case, the, the repeated issue was whether or not a, uh, there was adequate frontage from something other than a public way. And there was no difference in the, in the actual lot, the A and R lots that had two different A and R lots in that case. And there was no difference in the actual, uh, uh, lot itself. On the other hand, in our case, uh, the, the, the issue that the parties went to the barricades on the last time or were perhaps integrated as to one issue, but I'll divide them into two. They were whether or not the fork times, uh, were sufficient. And then if in fact they, they, uh, even if they were otherwise sufficient independently, were they sufficient in light of the fact that they were tied to existing fifty five Farm Road? And therefore infectious invalidity issue was raised. In this case, with this petition, you don't have any fork times. You don't have any infectious invalidity issue, and the parties are not going repeatedly to the barricades on the same issue. So, uh, i- i- in my view, uh, if in fact we get to that issue, uh, there can be but one complete con- conclusion that it's not a repetitive petition. I still also would assert the other, uh, things that I said in my letter. One, um.
Okay, but, but, but let me, let, let me ask, withhold you there just so we can try to deal with the repetitive petition issue all at once, because then I know you guys have other wood to chop and other arguments to make, and we want to hear them, but, um, uh, Mr. Dennis Murphy, I have to say that having read that case carefully myself, you were kind of provided to us, and I thank you for doing so. It seemed abundantly clear that the problem was that the zoning board of appeals on the twenty fifteen building permit had said that gets denied because as a matter of law under the Beverly zoning code, these lots have merged. You can't have a second house on, on that lot. And there was nothing that changed that at any time, but, you know, it, maybe you talked to the lawyer, maybe you know the answer, but it's a complete mystery as to why the ZPA didn't, didn't, didn't flip it a second time. Um, and I think, uh, Judge Foster may have strained to try to say, well, there must have been a repetitive petition here, but, but, Mr. Murphy, your people won last time. Um, so it, it's, it's hard to say that, that, uh, the repetitive petition i- is, isn't you guys, but, 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 but you won. And so it, 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 it wouldn't apply to you because you won, and it wouldn't apply to, uh, to James Murphy's client, uh, the Phoenix people because, uh, they, they didn't make a petition last time. Um, and, and I don't see a way that, uh, you can apply the, uh, the Beverly case to our facts without stepping on the banana peel I first pointed out, which is, if that's right, every time a zoning, every time a, a building permit is, is flipped, the lot becomes unbuildable for two years unless you jump through the hoops of the repetitive petition statute. Um, I'm, I'm just not at all persuaded it's remotely applicable to these facts.
Well, the, the argument that, uh, Attorney Murphy odder, offered is exactly the argument you'd expect to be made to the planning board. And in my view, the issue is you may all think that this is different, and it's not a question of y- you will ultimately as a zoning board have to decide it. It's who gets to decide whether it's materially different. And I, I may have misspoke, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we commonly refer to section sixteen as repetitive petition. But what, what is, uh, new about Judge Foster's decision is that it extends to building permit applications. So what I think is the foul here is that before the applicant whose building permit was rescinded could reapply. He had to first get leave from, from the planning board and from this board to apply for a building permit. So it wasn't my petition to overturn the building permit that's repetitive. It's the application for the building permit itself. And I'm, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to handicap whether or not he can get the relief that's required by the law. But I think he has to, and it might just be easier if, if he just did, and I don't fault him for not doing so because the case was just decided.
Well, I'm, 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 I want to hear what my fellow board members say, particularly Mr. Fitch, who, who is, is a zoning litigator. But I have to say, I'm, I'm really not persuaded on, on two grounds. The first is that this is one land court judge making a big extension of, of a statute that makes no mention of building permits, that lists some other things. And I'm not sure that one land court decision by one land court judge necessarily sets the standard for precedent that everybody has to follow slavishly. Foster's a smart man. He's a good judge. Um, but, you know, land court decisions get, get some deference, but they don't get the same deference as the, as the board of the P, as the, uh, uh, appeals court, and, you know, when the SJC rules, that's it, schools out, no more fighting. The, the other fatal flaw I see with your problem is that unlike the Beverly situation, this is a different building permit for a different uh, lot shape on a different plan and for a different foundation location. And I think to try to, uh, i- i- apply the Beverly case to that means you're stuck on the banana peel of every zoning permit turned down automatically has to go through the forty A six repetitive petition process. I do not think that is at all what the legislature had in mind. But, but Jonathan, uh, you're, you're a smart guy. You tell them when you think I'm wrong, so here's your chance.
In this case, I agree with you, Rick. Uh, I, 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 I don't see how the law can be interpreted to require, uh, the two year period. Um, it is a different permit for a, a different lot, plan, location. Uh, and I I, I just don't see that the land court decision would, uh, foreclose us from so interpreting the law.
Okay, Ron, do you have any position on the repetitive petition issue, or are you saying this is so incredibly boring, you're glad you have lawyers on the board?
I wouldn't say it was boring. But, uh, I basically agree with both of you who know so much more about the law than I do.
Okay, um, all right, so, uh, Mur- Murphy and Murphy, having sort of given you a hint as to where we're going on the repetitive petition issue. Um, uh, Mr. Dennis Murphy, as a petitioner, do you have anything you wish to say on, other than on the repetitive petition issue?
Yes, if I could just briefly, and I'm cognizant, uh, that you had other matters on, and I'm not sure if you have things left on your agenda.
No, you guys are last. That's why we put you there.
I, I still think it's respectful to be brief, uh, given that this is a forty A matter. Um, so the land is subject to a restriction. And the, uh, i- if this were a standalone building permit that had no history and no forty B next door and no prior A and Rs and so on and so forth, I think you guys are familiar with the history. Then I wouldn't even utter these words, but the, the reason the restriction is important is, um, I, I do a fair amount of this kind of work for, uh, groups like Audubon, Wildlands Trust, uh, a- all of my nonprofit, uh, conservation clients. And so a lot of them are under chapter one eighty four. Um, for perpetual restrictions, and we do an awful lot of things that are brought into a perpetual restriction that were not. So I have some familiarity with this. There is no case that forbids a second term of restriction, a private restriction. So what happened here? The original restriction occurred in nineteen eighty. It was valid for thirty years. It expired in two thousand ten. Two years later, two contracting parties put a thirty year extr- restriction on the same property. Now, that may have been the result of a conveyancing error, and that those parties may have an action for malpractice or some other thing. The same mistake, if it was a mistake, happened again a decade hence in twenty twenty one. And put yet another thirty year restriction. And put yet another 30-year restriction. Now, there is case law on the second one. So if you're already subject to a 30-year restriction, you can't re-restrict it and get the benefit of 30 more years. But in my view, and I lo- I offer it because I think it is going to be relevant for this, this property that you're considering for the building permit, i- it may not change your mind about this building permit, but it is applicable. That restriction is good until 2042. And the case that Mr. Murphy cited in his letter is about the, the time of, of restrictions, but that has to do with extending a restriction while it's still in effect and not after it's expired, that's settled law. There, there is no settled law that forbids what happened in this case, which is two parties in 1980 agreed to a 30-year restriction. It expired of its own terms in 2010, and then two different parties agreed in 2012 to a new 30-year term of the restriction. They may have done it unwittingly, maybe even committing malpractice, but nevertheless, it is a restriction in land.
Okay, and I guess my question for you, although I want to hear Mr. Murphy on the restriction issue is I think Jonathan Fitch, keep me honest here, even if the appeals court suddenly jumped onto our call and said, by the way, we ruled that there's an enforceable building restriction on this site today, our answer would be that's nice, but it has nothing to do with the building permit, and the remedy is to go to land court and get injunction against building the building. It's a, it's a, it's a private restriction, and it's not a violation of zoning for the building inspector to have issued the zoning permit. Jonathan, do I have that wrong?
I agree with you. I agree that that's the remedy. That's, that's not our hunt, so to speak.
So, so we're, we're not, you know, saying one way or another, the restriction is good or not good. I certainly don't have enough facts to evaluate that right now, I'm just saying I think it's a, a skew line to our analysis for this decision tonight on the existing building permit under 48 15. Mr. James Murphy, you can correct that if you wish.
I, I, I agree with you that first, I, I don't believe there's an enforceable restriction, but if in fact, there was an enforceable restriction, it wouldn't prevent the issuance of a building permit, because certainly the persons who have the power to enforce the restriction could choose not to.
Right. Right, and, and even if they did, they wouldn't come to us.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Dennis Murphy, what else do you have here, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I as the lawyer were tasked with arguing the legal points. It looks like I'm oh for two. And I think that I just want to make sure that neither Brian nor Mary has some other non-legal point that they wish to raise that we give them the opportunity to do so.
Thanks, Dennis, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I was just curious about, I had a question about the what changes have happened in the in the permit? I mean, I know where the fork tines disappeared, but I didn't see anything else that was materially significant, like was there addition, did the location of the building change? Did the foundation change? I didn't see anything else that was-
The zoning enforcement officer said there was a slight change in the foundation location. I have not, I have not scaled it out or planned myself, but it's not exactly the same. And, and of course, the, the killer here is that the lot lines changed because the fork time moved.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Brian has a comment, is that okay?
No, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman and other board members, so. I'm a practicing geologist by nature, and I've presented in front of several boards my interpretation of what I believe water courses. And the zoning bylaw on the town of Sherburne actually has the term water course appear in it several times, as well as I, I guess you'd call them you know, setbacks or restrictions related to the water. And nowhere in the application for building or its location does the, does the applicant appear to address the issue of water course. And our, unfortunately, in town, whenever we present it, we get told by Board of Health that it's a CONCOM issue, we get told by CONCOM it's not defined. And, and we recognize that, but some board somewhere, if these conditions exist, should I think adjudicate the proper setback so that that resource is protected, because that resource, in our view, serves as our drinking water supply. And this building and septic is being installed immediately up gradient of our well. And the, the Board of Health heard from our expert that we would have nitrates coming over the property line above the applicable standards, that it would more likely than not impact our groundwater supply well, and that there would be mounding in the wetlands above what the DEP considers to be an impact. And yet, no board has been willing to stand up and say this is something that should be protected. And so, you know, this is a concern, it does appear in the zoning bylaws, it's not a defined term. And I have included, I think in one of our submittals, a bunch of information I felt showed what a water course was a market system. And if the commissioners could just speak to that, I would appreciate that.
Sure, and I'm not a geologist, so if I get the geology parts wrong, forgive me. But, but I, but I am a lawyer, and unfortunately, our obligation under the statute and under the zoning bylaw is to enforce what's in the zoning bylaw. And, and as far as I know, there is no dimensional offset requirement relating to water courses anywhere in our zoning bylaw. Certainly that is, is not, that is specific, and, and I bet if there were such a thing, and Mr. Dennis Murphy would have, would, would, would have raised it on your behalf right away. Because that would be, th- th- that's exactly what he's looking for here, is it, is it, is a dimensional violation like there was last time. And I, the, the fact that he hasn't said anything, I, is to me probative that there probably isn't any such thing. And, and I'm not aware of any such thing in our zoning bylaw. I, I think the fact that your arguments on groundwater mounding and nitrate flow have not been persuasive to our Board of Appeals or our Conservation Commission is i- i- is, is between you and them. I, I think there are appeal rights when you think they have done things wrong or not done things right. But our, our board is not their keeper, except under 40B, which case we're a lot of people's keeper. So to the extent that this land or land next to it comes back plus under 40B, you should probably save your research because it might be relevant to us at that time. But today, for a 48 appeal of just this one lots building permit, I'm not sure that your other materials are, are, are on point. Jonathan, I'll, I'll invite you to keep me honest again, but I I didn't think it was within our jurisdiction there.
No, I agree with that.
I did have a follow-up question, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, go ahead.
I, I can't figure out how to include all my questions at the same time, so I apologize, but
Don't.
You know, the, the town has seen a 40B application that came in from this applicant for the neighboring 65, and I don't actually know if 53 infringed upon the 50, 65 footprint, but I do know that in looking at the 65, I'm sorry, the farm, farm road homes, 40B notice for the application, it does call out this, the 53 lot as a lot to be developed. And I'm wondering if the I don't want to use the term gaming, but if, if the, if there's some detriment to the town by allowing that to both proceed under what's a notice for a 40B, and then in our case, what is, obviously you're saying is a 48 standard A and R law development, if there's something, or if that's just a nuance of a civil engineering plant set.
Well, gaming might be considered argumentative, let me try to respond to it this way, which is if a developer has a large parcel, as they do here, they sometimes choose to develop some of it under 40B and some of it under 48. And sometimes they go for some permits under 48, and then decide now we're going to throw those away and do the whole thing under 40B. And I think in the development business and lawyers who work in the area, it's not necessarily seen as gaming, it's often not welcomed by the neighbors, but, but it is typical allowed conduct, I would say, in general. Well, that's, and I, and again, I invite Mr. Fitch to correct me, but.
No, I'm not going to correct you.
Having my best day today.
You are, I mean, we, we're getting a, a high level of agreement, the two of us.
If only the rest of my day had gone this well, oh, well.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So I, I noted that there was a response from Attorney Murphy about the forums that were submitted, and I just, this might be a administrative question, but if the public were to look up a building permit online, there is a building permit database that allows us to look up data permits that have been applied for and approved. And I was, I was under the understanding from reading Attorney Murphy's email that that permit was not the, was not filled out by the applicant, I'm just curious, you know, is there a disconnect there, is there a process improvement area?
No, i- 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 it, it, it's a process disconnect that isn't evil, let, let me take a shot at, at answering it, and and either Dennis or Jim or Jonathan can correct me. I, I looked into that with the zoning enforcement officer, and he said, yes, what, what the Moore submitted is what you see when you go online. But what you, when you see when you go online is not what was filed with me. It's an electronic version of it, done by some computer scan or something like that. And often, the online version does not match what's in front of me, and what's in front of me is filled out better and adequately, and my view as zoning enforcement officer, and I asked him this specifically, was, were any of the ministerial discrepancies on that document at all material, or different than other permits in town, and he said, no.
Okay, all right.
But, 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 but I, I agree that what you found online looks funny.
Yeah, so I think just from a, like, passing the sunshine test, there might need to be something saying, please check hard copy records. Something-
There are a lot of things you find online that I wish said that.
Yeah, thank you.
You can't believe everything you see online.
True, I, I, I know that.
All right, Mr. Dennis Murphy, Mr. James Murphy, does, do any of you have anything further to say on this appeal? Or does anybody else have anything further to say on this appeal? We haven't heard from the public yet, you're all allowed to speak up. All right, the silence is definite. Bored everybody into submission. All right, gentlemen, I'm going to, I haven't made a motion yet, but let me suggest that by way of concept, we say we're not ruling on the validity or lack of validity of restriction. We're not ruling on the validity or lack of validity of claims about Board of Health, water courses, any of those things. I am going to suggest that we rule against Mr. Dennis Murphy on the, on the repetitive petition applicability. And I'm going to suggest that we allow this building permit to proceed, and that we uphold the issuance and deny the, deny the requested removal of the building permit. So just with those sort of thoughts out there on the table, how do you feel about it before I try to articulate it as a motion?
I, I'm in, in agreement with, with all the things you said.
I am too.
All right. So let's see if I can spit it out. The board finds that chapter 48, section 16, the repetitive petition provisions of chapter 48, section 16 are not applicable to this building permit appeal. The board makes no ruling on the validity of any claims with respect to title restrictions, water course locations, groundwater mounding, or other matters outside the zoning bylaw and Massachusetts General Law's chapter 48. And based on our zoning bylaw and chapter 48, and the materials submitted to us, we find that the building permit was validly issued, we deny the petition to overturn it, and we uphold the building permit. That would be my motion.
A second motion.
All right. Been moved and seconded, further discussion, gentlemen? All right. Vote by roll call, all in favor? Aye, Novak votes aye.
Fitch, aye.
Okay. So, Mr. James Murphy, you win this one. I'm gonna go with life.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennis Murphy, we'll see you again next time.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
And attention. Jeannie, do we need to set next meeting, we have stuff stacked up for us?
Thank you.
Say no.
I say no.
I've always liked you.
Thanks, there are a couple of letters, though.
Yeah, okay, that, we'll talk about that offline.
Gotcha.
You're starting to break up, I can't hear you.
We'll talk soon. Everybody have a good night.
All right, everyone have a great evening, thank you all for your time and, and courtesy.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.